I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska Government's body. The City of Seward, Nebraska Open Meetings Act in Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back, Eric, Hannah Press, Chris, Tyler, Singleton, Smith, Dan.
First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of May 1st, 2018.
Move.
We have a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please square the votes. Next items are the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please square the votes. Next item number seven is a public hearing, a consideration of a special use permit for 1201 Main Street to operate a business support service at said salon. Ed, did you want to start this one off for us, please?
You bet.
Thank you. Welcome, Ed.
Good evening, council. This is a special use permit application by Mike Lewis to plan to construct a new 2,700 square foot storage building. The subject land is 1201 Main Street, land currently located in an R4 urban residential multifamily district, high density, and in the mixed-use category in the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map. The applicant is applying to construct another building similar to the building at 237 South 12th Street, directed to the south, which will supplement the same type of business. A business support services occupancy is allowed in an R4 zoning district only with a special use permit. The applicant has also applied for tips for the project, which has been approved by the planning commission and city council. Attachments were included in your packet, zoning map, future land use map, and the special use permit application.
Thanks, Ed. Great to be here. Any questions or comments from the council? It is a public hearing, so if you'd like, we can open the public comment portion of the public hearing first. We even, from the public, wish to comment on item number seven at this time. Seeing no one wishing to comment, I'll close the public hearing, public comment portion of the public hearing. Did the council have any questions or comments on this item?
Move to per.
We have a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please square the votes. Thank you. You're free to go. Item number eight, consideration of the request for street closures, parade permit for July 4th festivities. Did you want to take that one, Greg?
I think Jessica's here.
Jessica, did you want to?
It's standard, same as it always is, no changes.
Okay. And just do remind everyone, it's because it crosses the highway that we have to have a formal council action to move it on to the state. So unless there's any questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Ed.
Oh, I'm sorry. On AA, yes. Did you want to introduce the resolution? Dick?
Get on.
Okay. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number 2018-10. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please square the votes. All right. Item number nine, consideration of a lease agreement with Maverick Group LLC for the Seward Community Golf Course Clubhouse. Greg?
Yes, you remember pursuant to our original lease agreement that we entered into last July, we had set up the lease to coincide with just operation of the lounge and then obviously alcohol service across the entire golf course and also the availability to use the reception area within clubhouse. We went through and did our renovations of the clubhouse kitchen. We believe we got almost, if not all of those, to the standard that we hope will be good for us. But we did take care of, we replaced the flooring in there. We did all the cleaning, we had inspection of the hood, which was verified and cleaned out, so we had everything in there to our understanding, new plumbing. We got in new sinks and other fixtures and things like that that were up to code. And so we're ready to turn that kitchen over now to Maverick Group LLC, doing business with Par 15 Lounge. And so this, pursuant to that, as we contemplated and stated in the prior lease, that once the kitchen was ready to go, that we'd reconsider the lease and change terms to update that. So that's what you have before you here. I can answer any particular questions you may have about it, it's pretty much sit out there. I would note that I spoke with Julie Howe, one of the operators, and I know Matt Howe is here as well. Julie had one clarification, and I would request this as a friendly amendment. And I had to talk to Kelly, but section, paragraph six on page 42 of your packet, Julie just requested that the last line that reads "The leasing may reserve the lounge and restaurant for private events only with the advanced approval of the lease or..." This is language actually from the prior lease as well, but standard operating procedure that they've had under there is Megan, who's the manager of Par 15, Cody, which is our golf manager, they coordinate amongst themselves. There's no formal approval by us. They just work out their calendars. And so Cody usually goes first, sets all of his tournaments and everything he has going on, and then they filter in amongst that. And so Julie just requested that we strike the last sentence. So if somebody can make that within their motion, it should be choose to make a regulation of approval. But I can answer any questions, and like I said, Matt's here as well from Maverick Group LLC.
Does the council have any questions or comments on item number nine? Yes, Ellen.
What was their total cost for the renovations?
Bob, do you have the final number? I want to say it was way well under.
Way under what we had budgeted for.
I think we've.
As far as the flooring and electrical. Let's say the flooring, we had $10,000, I think it was like $6,400 for the flooring, and that was about what the electrical was.
And then the inspections were minor, like $500 bucks or something like that. And so, and they've done a lot of renovations themselves with painting and cleaning and some of the other things that are going on in there. We, yeah, so we think it's, to our understanding, we're good on the fire code, the flooring and stuff. So we'll just have, the last one will be the health inspector will come back. We had an initial walkthrough with the health inspection office before we got started to try and build our plan together. And so they'll come back through and work with Par 15 to do the final inspection for the kitchen.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes, Chris.
Well, since Matt's here, Julie, just kind of where we're at from here moving forward with what's going on after.
Well, first, I'm Matt Howe, one of the members of Maverick Group. Want to thank Bob and crew and everyone in the city for all they've done. I know it's been a drawn-out process, and there was a lot of work to be done there, so we appreciate taking care of some of those things. Lights seem to all work now, and water isn't coming in, so that's great. We need the lease to proceed with the final inspection, so once we have that, we'll take that to the, and with Greg's assistance, maybe get that moved up on their dockets. I can't tell you for sure how soon they'll be in there. The initial health inspector we had in is gone. There's a new one, so I don't know what her, I don't know anything about her, so her timeframe. But our intention is soon as possible. We've been eating the kitchen there. We've been catering food there from the cafe since November on a regular basis, in addition to catering and doing the golf events last, late last summer when Nate left. So we really, 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 really like to be able to use the kitchen, because it's a lot easier than transporting food.
Thank you.
I wish I could give you better answers, I just don't know.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Kelly, did you have some?
Oh, just note the term of the lease goes through October of this year, and that coincides with the liquor license.
That is correct.
Unless there's any other questions or comments, would someone like to make a motion?
Move.
We have a motion to approve with the amendment.
Pardon?
And a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please square the votes. Thank you. Thanks, Ellen. Item number 10, consideration of requests by Seward Aging Services Foundation to distribute net assets to the foundation and to a permanent fund with the Seward Foundation for the benefit of the Lead Senior Center. Mike Clintworth, welcome.
I'm Mike Clintworth, 1497 252nd. I am chairman of the Seward Aging Services Foundation. Believe it or not, there are 98 charitable organizations, I guess I would call it, registered with the Internal Revenue Service domiciled in the city of Seward. One of those is the Seward Aging Services Foundation. We know Seward is a very charitable community. 98 seems like a lot. The Seward Aging Services Foundation was founded in 1997 concurrent with the vision for the construction of the Lead Senior Center. Part of the funding was to go to build the building, and the vision was beyond that to create a perpetual fund to provide for certain maintenance, operations, and programs of the center, working with the Seward Aging Services Commission. Over the years, we've had any number of members. A lot of people are very interested in the work of the center and the commission. But operating a foundation itself, handling investments, handling tax reporting, that type of thing, is more of a challenge. And finding people that are willing to volunteer to do that has been a challenge. I've been foundation chair since 2007. We have a total of four members. We are independent, we are self-governed, and so we're responsible for finding our own replacements. For about the last three or four years, we've been trying to find people to backfill some of our current membership, and haven't had a great deal of success. As it turns out, people are passionate about, for instance, the work of the senior center, but not so passionate about being the treasurer, overseeing the management of funds, or I've yet to find anyone that's passionate about seeing that a Form 990 is filed on a timely basis. So with that challenge, knowing that we want the work to go on, knowing that we have today just under $1.2 million in funds for the ongoing work of the senior center, and wanting to find a perpetual, permanent home, we've undertaken some other avenues to try to find a way to solve the problem of volunteering. The Seward Foundation, which I think several of you sit on as members, you're familiar with, obviously, one of the organizations that support our city activities along the school district activities. They are, they have the same type of charitable status with the IRS, the Seward Aging Services Foundation does. They have a management and investment policy very similar to ours. And so last fall, we really started to work with them to try to come forward with a way to merge our foundation, and more importantly, the assets of our foundation, into a fund within the Seward Foundation that they could manage, be more efficient than two of us working, one is, you know, one body filing one tax form, that type of thing, for the ongoing purposes. Very similar to what you're familiar with for other civic city activities. This fund would be available to have grant applications from the Seward Aging Services Commission presented to it to fund activities, just like it'd been done in the past. The fund would be available to receive additional funds should the senior center or the Seward Aging Services Commission wish to have additional fundraisers. For the last 10 years, 11 years now that I've been involved, there hasn't really been any fundraising activity. It has strictly been a management and distribution tool. But again, I don't want to diminish the work. Just recently, distributions from the Seward Aging Services Foundation have funded a new HVAC system down there, new refrigeration system, or some components of the refrigeration system, exercise equipment for programs, and my favorite, which is a new pool table. Now, why is that my favorite? Because when I served on the Seward Aging Services Commission about 12 years ago, we actually paid to have someone remove the pool table we had at that time. But to the perpetual nature of the programs of the Aging Services Commission, these things come around. Pool has come and gone, and the foundation has been there. So with that, last week, we did take this, our foundation has come to an agreement with Seward Foundation, a copy of which you've seen, I believe, in your packet. Again, it's designed to work in a very similar way to the way the Aging Services Foundation worked and managed money, still allowing Seward Foundation to work within their guidelines and parameters. We, you know, intend to, you know, make sure everybody's on board, that's why I'm here tonight. We, the Seward Aging Services Commission did approve our recommendation on this matter at their meeting on May 8th. Seward Foundation did vote to approve this on May 9th. And so we are here tonight for informational purposes and hopefully to garner your support as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Ed.
Mike, just a question. So the SAS app will still exist.
Right. It will not. Once this is done, we will fold up shop. We have to basically get approval with Secretary of State, and we will unincorporate, if you will. And so then the dollars that we are responsible for will simply go to Seward Foundation. And will, because they are set up the same way we are, we have had, you know, legal analysis, a tax analysis that will preserve that charitable deductions that donors have given over the years. But we will, as an operating entity, go.
So are you, obviously, you're confident that the work, the concerns, the mission of the Aging Services Foundation, though in itself it is all, will be preserved and protected and carried on within.
Exactly. And as we've thought of those other 97 organizations, and where would a fit be? Yeah, exactly. You know, that's where this really, it seemed they have, they work with the city, there's a process in place. In fact, they even gave a grant last year to the Aging Services Commission related to the replacement of a van, some dollars that we worked with as well. So I think they're tuned in. I think their management style is very similar. I think the process will, for all of the affected parties, be seamless. So that's what we've tried to accomplish, and I think we've done that and really established more of a perpetual driveway for this, these dollars.
Thanks, Ed. Chris?
And Mike, just to clarify, so we're clear and everyone understands that 1.14, I think was the number, 1.18 million that's being moved is restricted for the senior center. Seward Foundation can't take that, it can give it to somebody else for the many things that come from the school district or the city. It is restricted for use by the senior center and the income off of that.
Thanks, Chris. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please square the votes. Thanks, Mike. Next, item number 11, consideration of an ordinance to renew the final plat of Fairway Woods addition. Ed, did you want to start this one off for us?
Yes, Mayor. Okay, this is a follow-up on Fairway Woods addition final plat, which was approved by planning commission and city council previously. However, the developer has not yet filed the final plat at the Seward County Clerk's Office. During this, the developer has decided to alter the size of parcels on Block 1 and adjust the utility easements on Block 2, as well as alter the plan for the detention pond by Number 2 Greens on the golf course. City Electric Superintendent Larry Luther has approved the utility easements. We actually met with Craig Weisart this morning to clarify some of those and to add some. Street Superintendent Mel Aldrich has approved the detention pond alteration, design alteration, and new parcels comply with our three zoning district requirements. Planning Commission met last night, recommended approval of the final plat after adding utility easement text labels for the dimensions listed on that Block 2 for the easements. It had the dimensions, but just didn't have the words utility easement. And to add those other 10-foot wide easements on the side property mines as well.
Thanks, Ed. Any questions for Ed? Yes, Chris?
I guess my only question is, given that, and I don't know how this came into play, I mean, we spent the time to go out and get a second opinion on water runoff and everything else, and now we're changing a detention pond. I don't know that it came into play in the original one, but I'm just curious. How does it change when we spent dollars for a second opinion and now we're changing something?
I believe members in the developer, the engineer are here to answer some of those questions as well.
Senator Coleman, did you want to address that? Jake, did you want to address that?
I'll let Senator.
Okay.
Mark Coleman, 2577 Waverly Road, representing the developer. That's a good question. When we, when we did the second study, we had already made the change. Originally, on the original plat, we had a pond there, and we took that pond out and put in a detention cell. And we had done that before we got the water studies completed. So this doesn't change anything. The water studies were completed based on the new cell, the new detention pond. We explained that last night to the.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, yeah. We, we spent a lot of time looking at that, and actually, we had Mel and Mr. Butcher and Ed and Big Bob Cora was out there. We had five or six people from the city that were there looking at how that would be built to the, to the north of Number 2 Green. And it really didn't change the function of the way we were going to do it. But what we did do is where you, it's a dry, it'll be a dry cell. So, but the dry cell will be leveled out and so that can grass after the playing season this year. And then, so when you shank, when you shank, or when you slice your ball to the right, you'll actually have some good grass to get off of. And the city's actually going to do that work. So it hasn't, it really didn't change the plan at all. The other thing that I would tell you is that we worked closely with the city on the easements, both the utility easements, and we agreed to give five, five and five between the houses on that Block 2. And then there's a 42-foot easement. That's, that's the houses that go into the trees, the backyards go into the trees. So we give the city a 42-foot utility easement, plus a seven-foot, seven and a half foot setback. So we're in good shape there. And everybody's signed off on it, as far as I understand. Is that be correct, Greg?
In regards to the easements?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that Dan's, the only concern we had from the golf course perspective on the change from a original pond design that we discussed, and that's why we kind of asked the development group to come back, because I think we left it in the discussions, we kind of got distracted with other things. In the last discussions, I think everyone walked away thinking it was going to be a pond, which also requires significant tree removal, I think. And Dan's here and Bob, so we can put some questions to them. And so that would require significant tree removal down in that area, lying low from two. And so I think that was part of the reason for the change. I know Jake's here, if you talk about kind of the engineering purposes behind it. I think the only concern, and I'll let Dan speak to this specific, is our concern is just the maintenance of it when it would actually be utilized. Have you ever seen when water comes in high, it sits? If it sits for an extensive period of time, then it leaves silt and all kinds of other things. It's just the clarification of how we plan to maintain that, should we have a major water event. So it's holding a lot of water for a few, for, you know, 24 hours or, how long is it designed to hold for, Jake?
Forty-eight max.
So it could hold for 48 on the maximum, obviously. So that kind of fills in the narrative, I think. But everything, utility-wise and, and the changes, we had no issues with the changes on the blocks widths or anything like that.
The other thing that we did was we, we took a look at that, that Block 2, and there were 10 lots originally. And Number 10 over there was, it was really such a small lot. It's a corner lot, and you're limited on what you can do with your setbacks on a corner lot. So we opted to widen all those and make nine lots instead of 10. So that, that allows us to transition from 62 to 70 to 75 foot, which is, which is actually better than it was. We lost one lot, but we think it was wise enough to do that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes, Sid.
Jake, I just got a question for you. Looking at this one that shows the, yes, a berm, I guess. So it says that the excess fill will come from Phase 2 development in current cropland. So if I remember, one of my questions early on was that there wasn't going to be any excavating or dirt work done in Phase 2 for some time until Phase 1 was all developed. Does that change?
No. I guess the way it's, the reason it's worded that way is because when we grade Phase 1, we're going to have excess dirt, and we need some of that excess dirt to go to Phase 2. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So they're going to take some dirt from Phase 1, put it in Phase 2, and that's where, that dirt that's going in Phase 2, that's what I'm referring to.
Well, it'll be stored in Phase 2, and then you'll use it.
Right. Well, not, right, correct. And I guess to clarify on the detention cell, what we originally had intended was to basically dig a hole and create a berm around that hole. That way it's not, you know, it kind of fits with the land a little bit. And the advantage to that is, you cut a little and you fill a little, and you have a net zero of cut and fill, so you don't need any excess dirt. That's, that's usually the goal. So with that, we were going to take out some trees, and it was going to be quite an impact to the golf course. But after we saw kind of how much excess dirt we were going to have, the water resources engineer who designed the detention cell redesigned it to show, well, you know, just the berm. And basically, instead of digging a hole, we're just building a berm and moving it up, you know? Everything just went up in elevation. So we're using the existing bowl that's there now instead. So everything there now, except probably in the flow line where the water flows when it's low, we'll regrade that because it is kind of cut through right now. And kind of as Mark indicated, we're going to regrade that and reseed it and everything. But that was, that's kind of the intent and the reason why it was redesigned. But it still has the same amount of storage, same outlet pipe.
Grade it what sense? We say, I mean, there's a nice deep crevice down there where the water runs now. So regrade it, and how, in what sense? Because that water that runs through there runs through the driving range and empties in Richard Zwick's backyard is where it goes. So regrading is going to do what? Slow the flow? Increase the flow?
No, the regrading I'm referring to is that crest that you're talking about will be flattened out and smoothed out, so it's not a straight drop-off channel. If that makes sense. They're going to make.
You're addressing the, the crack, the crick, whatever you want to call it, the ground. What about the movement of the water through there when you do that grading? How's that going to change?
We're essentially keeping the same flow line till that berm. And then after that berm, we're pushing the water essentially in almost the same path. And then, once we get across the golf course.
So that would hit your, I think it's labeled cell D then. Detention, retention, I forget the words we used.
Detention.
Detention, D, I think that's right behind Richard's house.
Right.
So you're going to push the flow still to there.
Yeah, it's still going in the same direction. All has, still has to go to that inlet that all that water goes to. It still has to go there.
And when is this planned to be done?
I believe later this year, with the city, Greg?
What was discussed is having, we'll be compensated for it instead of a contractor for our actual costs. The street department will go out and coordinate with Dan's group, because our concern was, is by having a contractor come out during a calendar year, Dan's going to be out there yelling at them all the time about how their. that Dan's going to be out there yelling at them all the time about how they're crossing and using their large equipment to get across and back and forth on the golf course, whether they're taking it off-site to go to other project sites and stuff. And so coordinating with the street crew and Dan, they can be a little bit more ginger about how we're going to address bringing large equipment on to facilitate this project. And so it was proposed by the developer to let us do it at our pace so that we can control how much damage we're doing to the golf course, and then we're ultimately responsible for it, rather than having a contractor come out and then Dan's chasing them off or trying to chase them back down to get things fixed and repaired because they're dragging bulldozers and all kinds of stuff right over the middle of the course and the fairways. So we'll coordinate that in in our off-season. Once we're out of the construction season, we'll phase it in after golf is over in the next budget year. And then the developers will just pay us our costs.
Thanks, Jake. Any other questions or comments from the council? Would you like to introduce the ordinance?
I don't know. Do you say?
In order to approve the plan entitled Fairway Wood Addition to the City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as herein after set forth located north of Hillcrest Drive and between North Eighth Street and Augusta Drive, treat Peel Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen dash zero four to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen dash twelve. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
My name is David Beck. Captain Chris, you want to sign with Schmidt, hands for the...
Again, this is Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Then the question is, should Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen dash twelve be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
My name is David Beck. Captain Chris, you want to sign with Schmidt, hands for the...
Thank you. Um, that's item eleven. Item number twelve, discussion and consideration of improvements to the Seward Regional Rail Campus. Jake, welcome.
Uh, so item A.
You brought it. Might as well use it.
Do you want to throw it up, Steve, sir?
No, I'm fine.
You can bring it to me, Jake. I'll put it up.
So I have a colorful picture. So one kind of has visual reminds you of what's going on out there. So just real quick on that visual. The area in yellow is future industrial, uh, land purchase that we have not made. The area in orange, to the east of that, is potential, uh, industrial, light industrial. That's in the thirty acres that we own. And to the east of that, next to the highway, is all blue, commercial frontage. But, uh, we only own the thirty acres, uh, to the north. Agator property, uh, to the south, that's identified as commercial frontage, is not owned yet. So...
Just to clarify with my great hand on this here, uh, the orange section and these two blue areas of commercial frontage is what we refer to as the thirty acre rail site right now, which the city currently owns and has previously planned.
Uh, so a while back, we got, um, got an agreement to do the plans and specifications for the infrastructure on the thirty acre rail campus. And really was to build, uh, road, storm, water, and sanitary, in the road going east-west, just off Walker Road.
Yep.
And then north-south on the west side of that road, connecting into Walker Road to the north and deadheading to the south. So that has been designed for a while, but we were waiting for some things to happen. We've had some opportunities come up and some come and go. And so, uh, I believe it's in, going to be in next fiscal year's budget for construction or this fiscal, I'm not sure, Greg.
Originally, as we remember in our budget discussions, when we finalized the budget back in September, one of the last things we discussed was when we were going to actually move on the rail campus. And the discussion we had was, we will look to supplement some of those funds for this capital build-out from utility funds and discuss whether we would do a low-interest loan, zero percent loan. And then also, uh, the idea that it would be built out in this budget year should something come or that we get to the point that we're sufficiently ready to do this. And so that's the point we're at right now, is just the thirty acre site. And what we would do ultimately is amend, if we begin this year and we go out for bids and there's a portion of the costs associated there with, we'll just amend the budget to cover the initial costs. But, uh, construction, maybe late this year, they may go all the way into next budget year in regards to... Because we're, we're late in the game for putting bids out for construction this point of year.
Right. Um, so what, if you approve these plans and specs as designed, you would be able to sell off the industrial area in orange and the blue area to the east of that. Apparently there's, oh, I think, eleven commercial lots, roughly an acre apiece. And the area to the west, uh, the industrial is, I think, eleven acres. However, um, am I free to talk about projects, Barry, or whatever?
No.
Okay. Can I talk about the change that we might make, the amendment?
Oh, I would, are you just referring to the roadway?
Yeah, the entrance.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Just, just noting that, because it's part of the master plan for any project we have.
Right. Um, so item C is amendment to our agreement for additional, um, paving and replating, paving in utilities. And what that is, is, um, uh, if we decide to, uh, put our new entrance off of Highway Fifteen on the south end of the thirty acre site, which is shown there now, Greg? There you go. Yep, right there. If we decide to do that, uh, we would need to amend our agreement so we can design that stretch of infrastructure. And we would need to reflat, uh, that ground to show the right-of-way going through there and those lots just to the north, um, of that. Should that work, should we move forward with that change? We could change order that into, uh, the work that's being done on the thirty acres, uh, considered an item A. And item, item D is the work to design the turn lanes for the entrance into the thirty acre site. Considering its current location.
These are turn lanes and de-acceleration lanes in relation to Highway Fifteen. We would widen those to allow people to come off Highway Fifteen into these de-acceleration lanes and then make their turns into the rail campus.
As you might remember, we had a traffic study done. And ultimately, that intersection, based on future build-out, the entire rail campus and future traffic counts, anticipated with commercial and industrial use, that location would need a signal eventually, uh, once it meets warrants. And, and DOT has stated that, once we build the entrance, it will need to have the turn lanes once it's built. Keeping in mind that if we can build the thirty acre site infrastructure, uh, considered an item A, without that entrance, because it currently does not meet warrants for a signal. And if we don't improve that entrance, we don't have to build the turn lanes. But if traffic gets to a point where that entrance becomes a problem, then, uh, NDOT will force our hand and we will have to get the turn home built and build the, the entrance. I know that's a lot.
And I would just state generally, I think this is okay, Jonathan. We've had enough project interest over the year, years that, the year I've been here and for a number of years, where we have large-scale projects that come visit this site that, should they come, would necessitate immediately, based on traffic flow, truck traffic and everything else, that to accommodate them, if they were large enough, they would have to have this immediately. Because the, it's Walker Road is not sufficient enough for that sort of traffic. The land you would, OT would force our hand because we would be causing an issue over there. So it, it's kind of being ahead of the game potentially for, for project ideas.
And, uh, I guess a little background on that entrance. When we did our traffic study, NDOT preferred it be a little bit farther south, which is more expensive to build the turn lanes. Because the tapers needed, based on your fifty-five mile per hour speed limit, uh, would require the turn lanes to begin tapering and begin widening, uh, just south of the existing bridge. So that project would include a bridge widening, uh, which makes it about a million dollars more expensive. Also, with this amendment, uh, moving the entrance to the very south end of the thirty acres, it allows you to get your main, uh, ultimate entrance in without acquiring the agator property. Uh, we are in discussions with NDOT about that entrance location. Um, so...
The other element that it also, as Walker Road comes across to the east of Highway Fifteen, it also stays more in line with its current alignment here. Should you use the preferred alignment by NDOT, I'll say preferred, and lower down that entrance into the rail campus some point down here, you will have to necessitate in the future realigning Walker Road somehow. And so this one perpetuates just a straight motion across. That's another benefit of being a little further up to the north.
So once, once built, we're not going to have a scenario where the state comes to us up and moves that back?
No.
No, we will have, they'll have to approve it.
Yes.
I mean, and so at the point that they tell us to move it back, I'm...
The turn lanes, um, and the access road are, you know, they're, they go together, obviously. Uh, and that would require a permit from NDOT, so absolutely hell would be signed off on by them. One other note, Greg mentioned, we're a little late in the, in the game for construction. Uh, we've got some, a contractor in town, uh, that is definitely interested in this project, so I know we will have some, some interest.
Other questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, we can start going through the items in twelve. We have item twelve A, consideration for...
Actually, Mayor, if I can, just because we have it out to denote the other location of an item that will be done this year just to fill in the hole, is in your, we call it the CIP, but the project list, identified for next year in the electrical budget. And the last item in the electrical master plan that Larry uses to set all of his projects, set for next budget year, is the building of a south substation to help power capacity issues within the rail campus and further south, all the commercial and industrial development to the south. And we're anticipating locating that somewhere up here along this electrical utility line that travels along and bisects, uh, these two, uh, right through the middle of the section there. And so we'll be looking at placing that. We started the engineering on that because we have engineering budget available and this budget year we're not using. And then, as identified in your CIP for next year, that will be a project that will be completed, uh, independent of all of this because it's pretty much anything me and Jonathan are running into that's of any size. I mean, mid-scale projects are requiring the capacity need that that necessitates. And so we'll continue to move forward with, uh, the substation as you guys put it in your CIP last year.
Chris, do you have something?
Well, my question is related to item C. Do we get to that one or...
Oh, you go ahead. Do it now.
So Jake, if you could review your, uh, agreement amendment here. Since it does say amendment, I, what, what is, are all these dollars, the forty-three thousand, all of that new expense? Or is it amendment to existing expenses that were out there?
These are new expenses that have to do with the entrance road and infrastructure. So we have to reflat it. We have to design that stretch of infrastructure. And we have construction services with that. And so once it's built, we're here on-site making sure it's built correctly. So there's nothing else you'll need in, you know, testing, staking, all that, all that stuff.
Okay, so are these two separate dollar amounts or does one add in together? Because I'm seeing, uh, I'm looking at the packet page eighty-six, if anybody cares, where we've got Phase Fifty, One Hundred, Two Hundred, Three Hundred, Four Hundred, and there's proposed total fees of forty-three thousand. You dig in a few more pages into what is referred to as the letter agreement for professional services. So it's not an amendment, unless it's part of the amendment, where there's an eighty-nine thousand dollar fixed project.
Yep.
Two separate fees or the forty-three rolls into the eighty-nine? What do we, what do we got here?
Eighty-nine is item D.
Okay.
And the amendments, and that forty-three is item C.
So two separate dollars.
Yep. And this amendment is to the original agreement for the development of the construction documents for the, um, infrastructure that you're considering in item A.
Sid, do you want to ask?
Jake, did I understand you to saying that, that all these changes are kind of contingent, though, on if we bump up the entrance? Or are we bumping up the entrance? Because this is all relating to changing the, the, the turn lanes and everything to be just at the end of the overpass, correct?
Correct.
Versus where...
Correct.
Previously, you're, you're...
Yes.
Further south.
Yes, this scope is specifically for that location.
So these dollar amounts that Chris was asking about only will be needed if we move the entrance. But are we?
That's decided in...
Deciding tonight.
So if we approve this, we are moving in?
One of, as Jake noted, one of the reasons to necessitate the move is that there, when they went back and went through it, and this was identified, I believe, in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, initially.
Initially, and we've had no change in the speed limits. Because that's one of the other things that we can work on, but it takes more time than a week or two, is looking, you talked to NDOT about the speed limit there. If you slow down the speed limit over the overpass in that area, then it shrinks the distance we need for the turn lanes. Potentially, we don't know, potentially pulling it away from that bridge. But that may take a whole new study of traffic, which could necessitate six months. I mean, and so...
So the big if here still is in the hands of NDOT?
NDOT. They'll con, NDOT ultimately controls what the city will do here no matter what. And if they say, because we actually have a meeting with them trying to be scheduled. They just emailed us this evening to discuss this again. But we have to keep the ball moving in regards to allowing for the development of this site. If we don't have a plan for this ultimately, that may cause us an issue with potential projects.
So then my next, thank you. So my next question then is if, if, if C and D are kind of a yes-if, why can't we separate C and D into a thing that we would decide upon when it actually is an if? Like if, like if we do really know from NDOT. Instead of now bundling it, because we can deal with the entrance separate from the rest of the infrastructure, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct, Jake.
So I, I'm just, I personally would be a little more comfortable moving this C and D's funding, since it's kind of in the air, to its own decision and leave the rest of these in tonight.
Okay.
Is that possible?
My, my only recommendation is there is potential pieces in motion that may necessitate... Because what we can do is we can approve these, and Jake cannot expend a dollar, correct, Jake? You can basically sit on it, not charge us a single penny. And there may be some decisions made in the next week or two that these just get cut off entirely. and there may be some decisions made in the next week or two that these just get cut off entirely. And so, we void them out and we're done with that portion of the project, based on some conversations with NDOT and potential projects. And so, if the potential projects are available though, we need to have some sort of mechanism to get started, at least having the discussion and having engineers available. So, I guess that would leave it up to the administration that, but if we're, if you're really wholeheartedly adamant, don't like that alignment, I would say then you need to hold it up. If that's.
I like, I like the alignment. I just, I'm just a little hesitant to approve, you know, what is it? Forty-three plus eighty-nine, you know, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that maybe we'll need to spend, yeah?
We, that is a fair assessment in regards to that, but I think in regards to our calendars, that like, I mean, we can even table them, but by then we might be two weeks behind, so.
I don't want to hold anything up, I'm just curious.
I guess John Olson came and met with the rail campus committee, and he originally had worked on the entrance and he was very confident that NDOT had approved that location. And there's several, he, he prepared several documents to, to show that that had submission of site distance. Because that was the main issue. You've got a speed of fifty-five and you're coming over a hill, and then you're going to have stoplight. That's, that's the main issue that NDOT had and they suggested pushing as far south as possible. So, you know, in his assessment, that was a done deal. That was the relocation of the areas. And then we moved to the traffic study and the folks in traffic got involved and they kind of said, well, it's really a little bit far to south. And at the time, we kind of just said, okay, well, it's a traffic study, that's what we'll master plan. And now, here we are getting ready to move forward with it and we really look at the numbers and we're going, okay, that original assessment where we were back on the thirty acres, that was our best, best spot for the city of Seward in my, in my mind. Because future Highway fifteen improvements are four lane highway. So, whatever you widen on that bridge, if they say you have to do that and move that entrance south, would be completely avoided later. And, I mean, ideally, in that situation, the state would, would say, hey, we've got some extra money, let's just build our ultimate bridge. There you've got your widening and you've got your turn lanes. But that's not the case, I don't think. So, I guess we'll find out, but.
If I may ask, just pursuant to our discussions with NDOT, I'll address this to Jonathan. This might help our question here. Jonathan, based on the information we have as of today, do you see any concern if we hold off on those two elements? Because we want to continue to move on the thirty acres. That was the original plan of the council. And barring any other projects, we want to get that developed. We have the signs out for sale. Do you see any issue with tabling or not tabling? What's our, our Robert's rules in regards to what we want to do in regards to delaying action on, on C and D until the fifth at this point, Jonathan?
Jake, so clarification, if we, if we end up having to move forward, I mean, what is your, what is your professional experience for how quickly we'd be able to get approvals to build that, get, get approvals from NDOT and actually build the improvements?
So, total life?
Yes, right.
And design how far until it's built?
Yes.
The turn lanes could be built later this year. It would be in before December. They would be asphalt, so it's possible. The infrastructure could all be in this year. Again, that's, that's assuming you get someone that can do it quickly and isn't too full for the rest of this year. Otherwise, we're talking probably June next year. Because they would probably wait until spring, start up in April. Two to three months for each project there, yeah, so.
I would recommend not moving it.
Yeah, I had Chris first.
You know, as a council, I think we've committed to this rail campus and making this thing happen. What I don't like are seeing things come in front of us and we see forty-three thousand, eighty-nine thousand, don't need it right now, we'll hold off, and now it's seven months later and it's fifty-two thousand and a hundred and two thousand, because things change and go up. I mean, we're, we're committed to this. This is the plan we want. That's where we want the entrance. If, if state tells us we got to move it, we, we got to move it and we deal with it then. But this is what we want. It's designed. We've worked on. It will work. It works for our plan and our intent for the area. I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with C and D. And, because we're going to need to be there. We need to get it done. It's going to help foster movement and get this stuff sold and start making some money on our investment or at least pay off the dollars we have borrowed on the investment, so. Comment number two, just for Jake, and I know you don't put the contract stuff together, but pet peeve of mine is I deal with these contracts. When people throw things out here for reimbursement, then it's actual cost plus they want another ten percent versus an actual cost, come on. If a pencil costs you a dollar, charge me a dollar because you used it on the, don't, don't charge me a dollar cent. So, future negotiations have those removed in contract.
No problem.
Ellen?
I agree with Chris that you should move forward with this. I think it sends the right message that to whatever companies may be interested in doing business here and acquiring this land and, and building plants or whatever, it sends a message that we're committed to this, this site and that we're willing to move forward. Again, the money is not spent unless we need to do it. So, I would support moving forward as proposed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Move to approve by me.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on item twelve A, ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. On item twelve B? We have a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. On twelve C?
Move to approve.
Sorry, man.
We have a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. And twelve D?
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. All right, thank you. Thanks Jake. Item thirteen, consideration of an ordinance updating the municipal code with regard to chickens in the city. Greg, did you want to?
Kelly?
Kelly, somebody want to start this?
The, the original author?
Yeah, so. I'm not, I'm not a chicken expert yet.
I am.
So, we, what we did was we looked at some other ordinances. Mostly, this ordinance replicates Milford's ordinance that they have with a few exceptions. And also meets the requests. We had a citizen, you know, request that we draft this ordinance and she had requested that we allow for ten, so that's where the number ten came from. A deviation from the Milford ordinance was the waste removal. Milford had every thirty days. We moved that back down to seven, which is parallel to York's ordinance. Milford ordinance was taken substantially, I think, from what Waverly did. So, we also looked at some other ordinances. This is what we came up with. And so, what this does is it amends the existing ordinances that we have in place for animals and requires a permit. And other items. Questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? Good.
I would just note, the next step after we ultimately consider this item is that Kelly and myself, predominantly Kelly, we'll go back and look at the other related animal issues that, I believe, Councilman Camper asked us to address. We wanted to do this one separate from those. We think it exists as a separate consideration in other municipalities. And then we'll go back and look to, look at our hooked animal friends and some of those other considerations. So, we didn't forget that aspect of, of the request. We wanted to see where you guys wanted to ultimately lay, no pun intended, this item and then, and then go from there.
I'll add this order. An ordinance to amend section two thirteen dash three point two, to repeal the original section two thirteen dash three point two of the municipal code of Seward, Nebraska, and to provide for the effective date hereof in ordering the publication of the ordinance in public form, be it ordained by the members of the governing body, the city of Seward, Nebraska. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash thirteen, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with the statutory rule?
Someone second.
We have a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Oh, I said, can I ask you?
Yeah, I'm going to get to you here in a second. We're going to have further discussion on the actual item here. They give me two more, three more lines and we'll get to it. Please play the votes. That just, that just suspends the statutory rule about three readings, so we don't have to do this for two more meetings. And so, then we're going to get to the actual item here in a second. Again, this is ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash thirteen. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So, move.
We have a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Now, did you want to add anything?
I just had a question. I'm ready to get up.
Please come forward to the podium. That's the punishment for asking.
The punishment, yes. I'm Jill Beisler, eleven thirty sunrise. I'm the crazy chicken lady who, thank you, who, all of you who considered this and wrote the new policy. So, my only question was, and I think we had discussed it before with the crazy duck lady, who I don't think was here tonight that wanted the duck, and then there's the issue of the two hundred square feet from the property line and having all those people sign. And I was sitting in my yard again tonight and we had all the people in the perimeter, you know, at the backyard perimeter, because the policy says the chickens have to be in the backyard, sign. And, and I don't know how far two hundred feet is in every direction, but I think it's probably more than I had signed. So, I don't know if we wanted to reconsider that and, and have it just the people immediately affected by it or if we think the two hundred feet is, is appropriate. I don't think my neighbors, you know, across the street and down the way, three houses, even though I have chickens, but if I need to ask them.
Kelly?
And the, the two hundred feet actually came from the existing ordinance that we have in place for permits required for animals in town, so. I, I, I'll, I don't have any preference, I guess, either way or any experience on, you know, what the appropriate feet is.
Just a reminder, because she's not here, but she did come to our last meeting and initially discussed this. I had a woman that came in to do chicken and I believe, she was one of the chickens and ducks, one of each. And she went around and got her permit filled out and she came back and dropped off her signatures and everything, and she had three signatures. And when we ran the rule explicitly to how it's written in your ordinance, we came up with twenty-two signatures she would need, based on the two hundred feet from the property line. So, it's not like centered in her house or where the coop would be or anything else. It is two hundred feet from all of her property lines. And so, she was hitting like whole blocks over, across the street, based on if you just hit from the corner of her yard, two hundred feet out straight, you would nick other corners and stuff, and so. I can make a recommendation if you want. I think Jill would make her own recommendations if you want. I, I don't.
I think.
I'm just noting that concern, but that's, it is correct Kelly. That was the previous rule that we had in place during the two hundred feet. Now, I don't know in review, other than the ones I've reviewed, which is one now, that that was probably accurately reviewed or to the level of depth that maybe I did. So, I don't know.
We each, is that two hundred feet? Should we not just have adjacent properties?
We could. And then the, the question would be, I think, the easy one is on your block face. So, if I'm looking out to my streets, the person to the left, person to the right of me, probably the three or four adjacent to the backyard, obviously. Does that count the people across the street? Because under the two hundred foot, you have to go across the street and ask that person. So, that's why I want to know what, what you would mean by adjacent. I don't.
Yeah, I don't think that would be adjacent. It's across the street.
Yeah, and so it would just be the, basically touching the property line. Maybe, do we want to include the catty corner ones in the back? So, if you have one person directly behind you, one on each side and the, I don't know. You let us know what you want.
I think that's reasonable, because that's, that's who's affected, you know, because depending on what you have a coop, it may be way over when that, to the corner of the.
Okay. I don't know exactly how.
Is it adjacent property owners or, or people living there?
It would be adjacent property owners.
Owner. So, I ask, is this like a rental? It's, is it the owner or the resident? Let me try to clarify.
Well, the hard part with the owner is that if it's an out of state owner, what do you do?
You still have to get the consent.
Yeah. So, that would be my only suggestion on that end of it.
I would leave it up to the property owners.
Between the apartment.
What? I would suggest leaving it to the property owners.
Okay.
They can deal with their tenants.
Let's see. B two.
Yeah, so the, if, if that's what the council wanted to do, you would change B two to state the applicant must provide proof that there be no objections from the adjacent property owners, period, and strike the rest of B two.
Council, any questions or comments about that?
I'd say, the only, the only issue I have with it is that if you're on a corner lot and you have people with direct access across the street, if that's not adjacent property, you're still getting the fallout from any noise or line of sight on any of that stuff in the background or in the backyard would be the, the main issue where I would almost want to stick to, not necessarily two hundred feet in all directions from the property lines, possibly reducing that or cutting it down to a hundred feet.
A hundred would still go, some of ours are originally fifty-foot lots. So, if you go a hundred, you would hit the lot next to you and the next lot.
That wouldn't be fair enough.
I mean, technically, I think fifty feet, you would probably hit a good swath all the way around. You may not, but you wouldn't go across the street then.
Right.
I'd say seventy-five would probably be safe. We usually have sixty to sixty-six foot right of way. No, Ed's not here anymore. Sixty-six foot right of way, so maybe seventy-five feet would cross a right of way. So, you, but that was still going to hit the person across the street probably. That's the.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what, the only thing with being adjacent, if you're across the street and you're not on that property line, where you have the, that right of way in between for the street would be my one issue with that.
Kelly, do you have anything to add?
Um, if somebody, if you want to be seventy-five feet, that, that appears to address adequately.
You might have to go across the street near your neighbors, but you won't have to go the next block over behind them. So, we could just amend it to seventy-five feet and leave it as is.
That sounds good. Why don't you, um, take a vote on that amendment first?
Yep.
Okay. So, we can make a motion to amend.
Move to amend B two to seventy-five feet from two hundred feet.
We like a motion in a second. Is ready for discussion. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
So. And now, you, you, I think you've got a motion.
And, and now you, you, I think you've got a motion second, so if there's not any further discussion, you can vote on the.
And the question is.
That's amended.
Yes. Shall ordinance number twenty dash, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen dash thirteen as amended be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the vote. We did before.
Before we had discussion.
Before the discussion.
Uh, voting favor, back camp, Chris Miller, saying, or Schmidt, hands, motion.
Thank you. Item fourteen, consideration of an ordinance distributing the pay steps for facility maintenance supervisor and utility maintenance worker two pay lines in the comprehensive pay plan, Greg?
Uh, as I assisted and may help make recommendations for our comparability review that we did in the late fall, early winter, one of the things that we identified that you guys had to work with was the fact that in previous comparability studies and adjustments, um, sometimes you would, it's easy for us when we move the top number up and either move everything up or the bottom number stays the same in regards to the minimum salary range. What happens though is that if a comparability study shows that the minimum salary range may need to be decreased to accurately reflect that, it stressed the whole thing out, stretched it out, and what ultimately would happen is you would have people that were currently at certain points in the pay scale that would be getting paid, if we put them on the same spot they were at, they would have to be paid less. Correct, Chris?
Correct.
And so what we did was we adjusted that one step only, we redistributed all the numbers evenly from each step, from the minimum to the maximum for each salary range, but for that one person who might be in that position, whatever their salary was on that date, we just offset that step. And what we would find is, as you reviewed the steps, you might have a fifty cent raise one year, fifty cent raise, a dollar seventy, maybe twenty cents, fifty cent raise, fifty cent raise, fifty cent raise. And what we determined in going through comparability this year to help alleviate some of those issues, is that anytime we had an opening in one of those positions, because we have a lot of job descriptions where there is only one person, when that opened up, we would redistribute those back out and just make them all even as we do with all the other job titles, for the most part. There's not, that requires it, but that's traditionally how we've handled it, is that even distributions between each step. And so we currently have an opening that we're working to fill in the facility maintenance supervisor in the water, wastewater department. And so what we've done here is we haven't changed the minimum or the maximum, we're just redistributing that back out so it's even distribution between steps. And then we will, also found that when we reviewed the utility maintenance worker two, we were able to do the same thing without affecting the current employee there. And so we recommended that, and so the changes that we've recommended here are only to the facility maintenance supervisor and the utility maintenance worker two, there is no change in the minimum, there is no change in the maximum, but it's properly redistributing all amongst the steps, that's it.
Any questions? Or comments?
An order to provide for classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to redistribute the pay steps for facility maintenance supervisors and utility maintenance worker two pay lines, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of, of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fourteen, and the title is hereby approved, and a motion to dispense with the statutory rule. We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fourteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing another question, is shall ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fourteen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes. Uh, this is the last ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion, uh, to make all the ordinances a part of the permanent record. We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Uh, next item fifteen, consideration of a resolution designating city items as surplus, Greg?
Um, I've not personally been a part of a surplus items process before, but it is dead, designated by, uh, our city codes and Kelly handled updating the, the resolution. We have a number of items that were brought to us by the libraries, that's predominantly what you'll see here with shirts and decks of cards and things like that, but, uh, we were recommended to dedicate some of them as surplus property, and so we have recommended, uh, the following list, maybe has any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council, yes, that one.
What's round and egg-shaped goo?
It's stuff left from the library. And there may be another surplus, uh, resolution on your next meeting, because as we started cleaning house, we found we have a lot of stuff.
Do you need a street sign?
Street sign? I don't think so.
So when you get property under five thousand dollars, this just gives the city the discretion to dispose of the items as they wish, and just directs the city manager to choose that method. And I believe there's gonna be, it's gonna be garage sales or it's, or.
I don't know yet.
Yeah. This is how you do it.
Any other questions or comments, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty eighteen dash eleven, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Thank you. Item sixteen, city administrative report.
Uh, just note, on March seventeenth, this Thursday at seven o'clock, we will have the kickoff for the downtown revitalization phase two facade improvement commercial rehabilitation program, and so we will have an informational meeting at the civic center at seven P M. In the basement, I believe, to meet with anybody that's interested, we'll have application materials, everything ready, and then we'll roll it out the next morning online as well, so you can get it on the city website, um, and we will get started with that. The LBA forty committee, which serves as the de facto DTR committee for initial review of these applications, has set the application deadline for Friday, July twentieth, end of business day. And so then we'll begin the process of consideration, review of those, and then we're anticipating the first meeting in August, that those applications initially will be brought to the city council after review by LBA forty. We just started budgets rolling out last week and we're deepening them today and tomorrow and initially working with department heads on budgets, and so we're doing that. And, uh, Ed and I continue, I think Ed stepped out, but we continue to work with the new owner, as Dick mentioned in the paper earlier, of one thirty-two South Sixth Street, um, or Fifth Street, sorry. So that property has changed hands on the downtown square, and if you saw it there today, they have a new roll-off and they're in there, uh, doing some abatement, I think on some mold issues and having the open roof, and then once they get that all cleaned out here this week, they'll have their structural engineer come through and do the final assessment, uh, and give them a report so that they can do the structural stuff to sure up the exterior wall to the front and remove the barricades.
Any questions? Greg? If not, would someone like to make a motion to accept the report?
We have a motion. Motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Are there any future requests for council agenda items or measure of action? If not, then, uh, upcoming events, we have a street closing for the summer reading kickoff, we have a street closing for Find Your Way Home Cultural Festival, we also have the mayor's ball classic golf tournament, uh, do you want to add anything, Jonathan?
Business after hours, Thursday the twenty-fourth, the Call of Rocket, five thirty.
Okay, great. Uh, was there anything else? I guarantee a motion to a chair. Motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Thank you all, have a great night. I'll send them on the council, I think, because we have stuff that we want to get